Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach held Tuesday, October 2nd, 2019 at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Diamond.
Yeah, I'm here.
Uh, Councilmember Aramo.
He's here.
Uh, Councilmember Mandell.
Here.
Vice President Bendo.
Here.
Uh, sorry, uh, President Moore.
Here.
Let the record indicate the presence of Acting City Manager John Morando and Acting Corporation Council Greg Kalnitzky. We'll now have a salute to the flag.
All right, we'll ask our Vice President Bendo if he would give us the pledge at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we want to welcome you this evening. At this time, we'll have a report from our Acting City Manager.
Thank you. I'd like to start off with first, there's been several comments being made on social media concerning an internal memo that had disseminated to City Council and department heads last week. Due to a leak, some members of the public are completely misrepresenting something that was strictly an internal message to ensure that the chain of command was followed internally. At no point in the internal memo would I be speaking directly to residents about who they can and cannot contact. Onto normal business. Moving on, the Fabian Gusto Ocean Learning Center, together with the City of Long Beach, celebrated the 34th International Coastal Cleanup Day on Saturday, September 21st, for a global event where volunteers and environmental groups took to the beach to collect litter and spread awareness about trash in our oceans. More than 275 volunteers congregated over two hours covering six beaches and picking up 210 pounds of litter, including 1,404 cigarette butts, 1,272 small plastics, 576 bottle caps, 501 food wrappers, 287 straws and stirrers, and countless other items, all totaling 6,275 pieces. These and other items were all reported back to the Ocean Conservancy for further analysis on the state of our coastal environment. Asphalt overlays, the city's police announced that the Department of Public Works will be continuing work on its annual asphalt overlay project. The week's overlay schedule will include East Walnut Street between Pacific Boulevard and Roosevelt Boulevard, the intersection of Roosevelt Boulevard and East Walnut Street, Roosevelt Boulevard between East Park Avenue and East Walnut Street, Monroe Boulevard between East Park Avenue and East Walnut Street, the intersection of East Olive Street and Franklin Boulevard, and East Broadway between Franklin and Neptune Boulevard. Street overlays are an effective way to increase the life of the road beyond it, essentially stopping the domino effect of road deterioration. Climate Smart, the City of Long Beach is now the first community in Nassau County and just the third on Long Island to become a certified climate smart community. Climate Smart Community is a New York State program that helps local governments take action to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and adapt to a climate changing. The city accomplished an array of projects to achieve this designation such as building a greenhouse gas inventory, upgrading streetlights to more efficient LED technology, adopting rooftop solar on government buildings, conducting a climate vulnerability assessment, participating in the National Flood Insurance Program, community rating system, hosting a climate-related public events, and much more. You can visit the city's website for more details. Earning this designation was a joint effort, and I would like to thank Ryan McTiernan, Tyler Hoffman for developing the grant application, as well as Joe Fravizio and Scott Kevins, Patty Born and their departments for all their hard work since Sandy, which helped get us this certification. The Long Beach Police Department will host a Coffee with a Cop event tomorrow, October 3rd, at Dunkin' Donuts in the Long Beach Plaza from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Feel free to stop by and chat with Police Officer Bonnie Girth. Congressman Kathleen Rice has announced that the Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department has been awarded $98,181 in federal grant funding to purchase new lifesaving defibrillators for their ambulances. The funding was awarded through FEMA's Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, which provides grants directly to fire departments for projects that enhance public health and safety, as well as health and safety of emergency response personnel. On behalf of the city, I would like to thank Congresswoman Rice for helping us obtain the funding for this lifesaving equipment that will benefit the residents of the City of Long Beach. We'd also like to thank Fire Commissioner Scott Kevins and the volunteer force for helping us obtain this important funding. In celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, please join your neighbors, friends and neighbors tomorrow at 7:00 PM at the Long Beach Cinema Forth for a free showing of Dora and the Lost City of Gold, presented by the City of Long Beach and the Long Beach Latino Civic Association. Tickets are available for pickup at the Recreation Center front desk. The Order of Ancient Hibernians Irish Day Parade begins on Washington Boulevard and West Beach Street at 11:00 AM on Saturday, October 5th. There will be vendors, rides, music, food, and raffles along West Beach Street until 5:00 PM. Additionally, the City of Long Beach will present a kids' fun zone from 12 to 4:00 in the West School Yard on Maryland Avenue, including rides, games, a DJ, and more. A special thank you to the Long Beach Recreation Department for making this family-friendly program possible. As we take part in the celebration of Irish heritage, we ask that participants abide by the rules and act in a safe manner so everyone can enjoy the festivities. As such, if you see something, say something by contacting the Long Beach Police Department. Immediately dial 911 for emergencies or call 516-431-1800 for non-emergencies when witnessing any violations. The city's annual Fall Festival will be held at Kennedy Plaza on Saturday and Sunday, October 12th and 13th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. There will be craft fenders, a carousel, pumpkin patch, petting zoo, music hayrides, and more. The costume parade begins at the Rec Fields on Saturday at 12:00 noon. You can visit longbeachnewyork.gov rec for more information. We owe a debt of gratitude to the city employees who helped make the Fall Festival a tremendous event, in particular Rosemary Alton and Carrie Ann Troy, who take the lead every single year. Finally, as a reminder, the Farmers Market and Arts in the Plaza is back in Kennedy Plaza on Wednesdays and Saturdays. Shop local produce and artisanal products while listening to great music. And that's my report.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much, Acting City Manager. I have a brief report this evening. Want to remind everyone that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we are once again encouraging our residents to move forward with screenings. There are several free screenings, not only here within our city, but also across Nassau County. We're hoping that you will take this time during the month of October to move forward with your screenings, because every screening can save a life. Secondly, we want to remind you that this is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We're asking that you will spread the word, that you share information, but that also you will take the time to have that conversation with your neighbors, as well as with your families. Since our last City Council meeting, a special meeting was held on Tuesday, September 24th. Mr. John Morando was appointed as the Acting City Manager. Last week, a letter was issued to the Comptroller's Office without the entire council's approval. While social media focused on a vote, which never took place, the issue at hand was actually the protocol for sending the communication before sharing this communication with the entire council. The council and the Acting City Manager have addressed the issue. Councilman Bendo will provide the update at the end of my report. The council would like to thank all of the members of our community who attended our work session, which was held also on Tuesday, September 24th. We are also extremely grateful for all of our staff who provided detailed reports. We look forward to having another work session in the near future. The council is actively working to coordinate a date, as well as a process, to meet with the prospective vendors with respect to our concessions for next year. We also look forward to Irish Day, the Irish Day Parade, this Saturday. This is an annual event which brings the entire community together, and we look forward to seeing all of our friends and neighbors at the event on Saturday morning. The council once again extends a happy and healthy new year to all of our Jewish neighbors. This concludes my report. At this time, I'll ask Councilman Bendo if he would read his statement.
Okay, thank you. It's really not a statement. I just want to read into the record a letter that was sent yesterday to the office of the New York State Comptroller, to Ira McCracken, the Chief Examiner. Mr. McCracken, we, three of the five members of the City Council, hereby advise as follows: The draft audit report prepared by Mr. Capazolo and submitted by Mr. Kalnitzky, the Capazolo response, is not approved by the City Council. Without the benefit of new independent counsel, we are not in a position at this time to respond on the merits to anything contained in the Capazolo response. Three, for the same reason, we are not in a position at this time to respond to the draft audit. Should you wish to discuss this with us, please contact us at our email addresses above. Very truly yours, Anissa Moore, President; John Bendo, Vice President; and Scott Mandell, Member.
Okay, now onto the voting.
Okay, our first item is a public hearing for an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding water and water distribution.
Okay, good evening, members of the council. This is basically what I've discovered to be a Scrivener's error. This was spotted by our Water Department. In the City of Long Beach, we have to bill for a minimum of 12,000 gallons, and the code that was enacted in May of 2019 provides that it shall be $4.50 for each 1,000 gallons used. The minimum charge is 12,000 gallons, but it says that the fee for that would be $53.98. $4.50 times 12 is $54, not $53.98. So this is simply a Scrivener's error. It's not costing the residents anymore. This is just a correct, a mistake that was made in the ordinance.
Okay, so once again, just to make it clear to everyone that this is indeed a clerical error? Is this what you're saying?
Yes, I think it is, yeah.
Okay, are there any questions from the members of the council? Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll now ask members of the community, our residents, are there any questions with respect to the item that's being presented, this ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach for the water and water distribution? Any questions at this time, yes? I believe I recognize Maylin.
Hi, thank you. Mylan Studard, 25 was about 33 or 6. Just wondering how this is going to affect taxes in any way. Whenever I'm reading the agenda, it really lacks in detail. So can you just be specific on what this is going to affect the residents and monetarily as well, please? Thank you.
Well, as I previously said, the code provides that each resident is billed for a minimum of 12,000 gallons of water per quarter. The charge per 1,000 gallons is $4.50, and if you multiply $4.50 by the minimum, which is 12,000 gallons, you get $54, not $53.98, which is currently written in the code. So we need to fix that. That's all.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time? Yes, Mr. Lester.
I don't think you heard the question. She asked how it would impact. Okay, so what she's asking is how does it go up from last year to this year? Okay? I don't understand. I mean, I'm sure the city has calculators, and, you know, even though it's an eight cents a year era, I don't understand how the math could be wrong. But what she was asking was, how does it impact? Not to go over the math again, that's clear to everybody.
Um, I haven't reviewed what the rates were before they were changed in May. This is what's in front of me right now. This, fixing this ordinance from May of 2019, that's when it was changed. So if you had a question about how it was going up, I think it would have been relevant to ask it in May.
Well, that's what she was asking.
I'm not sure. I don't have that information in front of me. I don't know how much the water rates went up.
Nobody here knows how much it went up?
I'm not sure what the question was.
Okay, thanks.
We were just trying to get clarification. What do you?
Not pertinent at all.
Okay. Was that your question, though, Mr. Lester? Before you walk away, I just want to make sure that we've covered, that was her question.
I just had to interpret it to you guys.
Okay, maybe we didn't understand the question. Thank you for the clarification.
I believe that, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, you were good. You were, don't move.
I believe that increase in rate were brought to the floor in April. I think it's April 24th meeting of the City Council. It was approved at $54 of a minimum. It just was a typo, if you wish, and now this resolution is to correct the typo. City residents are already charged that rate.
Correct. So it's not going to, we're not adding any additional monies towards the bill? Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, you are. You're increasing it from last year.
No, no, in terms of the clerical error, we're speaking to the clerical error. We're not speaking to...
Do you have questions for questions?
Okay, well, then maybe it's a different question. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions with respect to this item that's being presented? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Okay, onto the regular calendar. Item 1 is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding water and water distribution. A hearing has been held on this item already. Item 2 is a resolution authorizing the Acting City Manager to enter two agreements for auto body repair services for the City of Long Beach vehicles on an as-needed basis.
Okay, we're going to ask our Acting City Manager, Morando, to address item number two.
So I supply to the council, repairs for automotive damage to the bodies of the truck is something that we shop out. We always have, three years ago, the purchasing clerk noticed that the repairs were starting to approach the $20,000 annual limit where we would have to go out to bid. So in order to be able to efficiently repair vehicles that were damaged, we bid a contract then, and that contract was over. I supplied to the council the previous contract and the new contract with the rate increases. Each time a vehicle has to be repaired, we get pricing from all three, and even if the rate, labor rates may be higher for one vendor, the overall repair cost may be cheaper. Last year, we spent about $37,000. That wasn't covered by insurance. That comes out of the auto repair line, the general repair line in the city garage, which is about $575,000, I think, this year. But that's for all automotive repairs. The total cost for all repairs last year was $92,500. Most of the damaged vehicles are emergency response vehicles. They're police cars and fire trucks, and those we do collect insurance on, for the most part. There were only, and one transportation and two DPW vehicles. They're infrequent. I can't predict how many accidents we'll have next year, but, you know, hopefully it's none. But the council now has all the information they need, and I would recommend proceeding. And again, it was brought up, should we do this in-house? Unfortunately, we'd have to hire people that are expertise in doing bodywork. And as you can see, last year, just quickly, three, four, five, six, seven, there were maybe 20 repairs, so we'd have a person sitting around waiting for accidents and not really accomplishing anything else. So I think it still makes sense to contract this out.
Are there any questions at this time from the council? Questions?
I just want to, Acting City Manager Morando, I just want to clarify, the nature of these repairs is not something that can be practically done in-house. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct. We don't have the facilities. You need special paint booths and, you know, environmental controls when you're doing bodywork.
Can you just describe what some of these repairs would be?
Um, you know, this might be if a police car was in an accident, you know, damaged bumpers. I don't have the list of what the exact repairs were for, but these are mostly accidents, so it may involve getting parts, you know, at a shop, new bumpers, new quarter panels, new doors, sometimes new engines, if the engine is damaged in the accident, so. And one thing we do, fire trucks all go out to Audis, because Audis is the approved dealer by Ferrari Fire Trucks, who supplied all our fire engines and trucks, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time from members of the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll now ask our residents, members of the public, are there any questions with respect to item number two? Yes? Mylan Studard.
I asked a question about this in the last City Council meeting, given we had a different city manager, so the situation has changed. But what I'm wondering is, if it goes through insurance, why do we need to allocate $90,000 towards this repair?
We are not allocating $90,000. Last year's repairs totaled $92,000. Only, we recovered almost all of that insurance, with the exception of $37,000. We somewhat have, you know, deductibles, and we also are somewhat self-insured on some things, so. So we, actually, the $92,000 that was spent, we recovered almost $60,000, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Sam Pinto.
Good evening, Sam Pinto, Long Beach. Two questions. The first one was brought up last meeting in regards to take-home vehicles. Does the city, is the city accountable and liable to handle the claims for take-home vehicles when the person is not working?
Okay, good question.
I haven't had an accident with any, you know, anybody that's had a take-home vehicle, so I haven't had to address that, but I will give you an example. Somebody who does have a take-home vehicle, we've had a couple people get red light tickets, and those people have been made responsible to pay for those tickets, so I assume it would be the same way, unless they were in the performance of their duty on their way to work, to go to an emergency in the middle of the night, or anything like that, I'm sure we would cover them. But if it was just in terms of their commuting, we'd have to review that. If they were covered by insurance, our insurance would still cover it, or if it was caused by another vehicle, whose insurance would cover it if they were at fault. So it's kind of a, you know, it's a multi-answer question.
So the expectation, if the person wasn't in the process of doing their official duties, it would not be covered by city claims? So let's say a person has a take-home vehicle, they're going out for dinner with their family, and they crash the car. Who covers it?
Okay, so can, we'll have our Corporation Council, if you can speak to any of the liability issues.
You shouldn't be using your take-home vehicle for personal use.
Please use your microphone.
City employees shouldn't be using take-home vehicles for personal use. They're to get them to and from work and work duties. But with that being said, it's defined by the insurance policy what's covered and what's not.
Okay. Second question is, does the city, I know you said just a moment ago, we can't really plan for how many accidents we have. Does the city have an accident or crash prevention program, or defensive driving program, or, you know, any sort of diligence that we do for our drivers to help prevent accidents, so hopefully we have less claims?
That's something that we're actually discussing in the Safety Committee. We're trying to reduce our insurance expenses, and that's one of the avenues that we're exploring, is to have a universal defensive driving course to anybody who drives a city vehicle.
Great idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Thank you for letting me speak. Sir?
Lynn.
Oh, my name is Leanne Baker. I live in the President Street area of the city. I don't like to give out my personal address. This is streamed live. Mr. Morando, you had just stated that approximately $37,000 was not collected, as some of the vehicles are self-insured. Could you please elaborate why we would not collect that money? Because that would equate to a person's salary for a year. And what is it we're not insuring that would cost us out of pocket?
Well, if you're self-insured, that means you don't have insurance and you have to pay for everything. And sometimes for insurance policies, there's deductibles that the city has to pay before the insurance kicks in. So that's not an option to recoup those funds.
Sir, I am aware of insurance. I actually was a paralegal in insurance defense, plaintiff and defense, so I am aware of how that policy works. Could you please answer my question? Why would we not insure, like, a regular insurance policy? Why would we just take the brunt of that as a liability for the city?
It's a financial analysis that my office doesn't perform, but at times, it's cheaper to be self-insured than to pay for insurance.
Well, we spent $37,000, so if we had insurance, would we be able to recruit that money, as opposed to paying a premium?
Like I said, it's a financial analysis that's done. Sometimes it's not worth it to be insured if the insurance is very expensive.
Who would I speak to to go ahead and get a copy of that under a FOIA, so I can review that for my own opinion?
Review what?
What you're just now telling me. There has to be an analysis, and it has to be public, and it has to allow people to look at it. Because I'm going to tell you, I don't have a lot of confidence in what's going on in our city. We're number three in a financial mess. So when you're saying for an analysis, I'm asking you, one, who's doing it? Because, you know, almost $40,000 a year is equate to some people who have a yearly salary of almost $40,000 a year. That's a lot of money. And, you know, when you start adding this up with all this, well, well, an analysis, okay, where is it? How can I see it? You know, why do you think we're number three in the state for being bankrupt? That's why I'm asking you. I'm very upset with this city, extremely. I think we need to clean house and start over.
Okay, so I think you've raised some excellent points. I think at this time, being that you do have expertise in this area, if you'd kindly just... just send me an email or forward the email to the council, at least we can begin to look at some other options. We would welcome that information.
Thank you, Madam President.
Are there any other questions this time? Mr. Lester?
First of all, thank you for coming up with the numbers of what this cost us. That was the question last time. But this is the first time I've heard that our vehicles are self-insured. That's the case in the city? How many of our vehicles are self-insured?
I don't, I don't know which vehicles are self-insured offhand.
Why would we self-insure a vehicle? I can understand self-insuring other things, but a vehicle where somebody can get hit and it's a tremendous liability, why would we self-insure vehicles? And how's that decision made to self-insure which particular vehicles? Does anyone know? Could we look into that? Because it doesn't...
I've already made a note of this, Mr. Lester.
It really does. I can understand deductibles, but self-insuring vehicles, that's a new one to me.
Well, I think we still need some further clarification, and I think we'll bring that back to this body during the next meeting. Because we'd like a complete list, as was stated last time, with respect to the inventory as well.
And the criteria, the criteria, why certain vehicles would be self-insured and the rest wouldn't be.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions at this time? All right, we're going to move on to item number 4.
Item 3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter, excuse me, the acting city manager to enter into and renew the agreement with the Atlantic Beach Fire District.
We're going to ask our Commissioner Kemmings if he would come forward at this time. Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening. This is a renewal of a contract that we've had for the last 30 years for what used to be the West Atlantic Beach Fire District. They now changed their name to the Atlantic Beach Fire District, which covers the area approximately from the Sands Beach Club all the way west to west of the Atlantic Beach Bridge. Like I said, we've had this contract for 30 years. They have approached us to renegotiate the contract, and that's why we're here tonight. They have outsourced for paramedic services that will cost the Atlantic Beach Fire District $75,000 a year. That gives them a paramedic responding to their EMS alarms 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. They had come to the city and asked us to offset that cost. We went back and forth, and obviously, they were looking for a bigger number, and we settled at $37,500, which is 50% of the cost of that paramedic. Obviously, that does lower the cost of the contract, $37,500 a year for the first five years of the contract. Being that the, we're already into this fiscal year, we asked them to, for the first year of the five-year contract, pay the full amount, and then we would multiply the 37.5 by the four years and take it off the four years. So we would not lose any income in our budgeted income for this fiscal year.
Okay.
They have a renewal clause for an additional five years, asking us at that time to offset the cost at $39,000 and change for that five, additional five years. That's where, tonight, I know I've emailed everybody, trying to answer everybody's questions the best I could with, you know, 10 hours' notice, but if anybody has any additional questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Okay. Are there questions now at this time from the members of the council?
Just, and thank you, I know I was driving you nuts today with a lot of questions. Just one, if they're paying Cedarhurst $75,000 for a paramedic, why wasn't there consideration to them paying for our paid paramedics to perform that service?
Right, well, they did approach us for that. First, there are some contractual issues since the Fire, Professional Firefighters Association is the primary responders in the City of Long Beach and the East Atlantic Beach Fire District. The West Atlantic Beach or Atlantic Beach Fire District is not listed in their contract. So that would have had to entail some type of contract negotiations. On top of that, for us to supply the paramedic, additional paramedics, to not gip the residents of the City of Long Beach who are paying the majority of the cost for this paramedic, we would need to have hired probably two additional paramedics. Just the salary alone for the two additional paramedics is $82,000 and change, not including the fringe benefits. That cost, while they would have been in the air, of $160,000 to the city. Seeing that, this $37,500, to keep the contract and maintain what we're providing down there seemed like the better deal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so just for clarification, based on your most recent statement, you're saying that if the professional firefighters, if they're already there, but for whatever reason the contract has not been negotiated, but they're already actively engaged, why can't we just use this group so that we wouldn't have to pay the $37,500?
Well, if we use the on-duty people that were here and they were tied up in a call in Atlantic Beach, and somebody was at our recreation center having a heart attack, and we used one of the AEDs we supplied for down there, and there would be no ambulance to respond because they'd be tied up in Atlantic Beach. So our EMS services are limited and stretched thin. You know, that's a discussion for another day of hiring additional paramedics just to staff and protect the City of Long Beach. But at this point, this seemed like the better deal.
Okay, are there any other questions from the members of the council? Seeing none at this time, we'll ask our residents. Question, yes, Karen McGinnis? Good evening.
Good evening, Karen McGinnis, 102 Pennsylvania Avenue. At this point in time, I really question entering into not what is a five-year contract, is a 10-year contract. I do not understand why the city would consider that at this time, even though this is revenue, primarily because I don't feel enough adequate financial analysis was done. My main point, my main example of that is that while we get $37.5 off the first year, off the first five years, and it increases to $39,250 for the second five years, you're assuming that nobody's getting paid more. So that means the city is eating the full cost of everybody's increases in salaries and benefits. This is a rookie mistake, and I think you should get somebody like CMA to perform analysis on this contract before you pass it.
I want to make it clear that the second five years is an option, and as the contract says, it would only be agreed upon by mutual consent of the City of Long Beach and the Atlantic Beach Fire District. So at any time between now and the end of this first five years, this can be renegotiated. We do not have to enter into the other five-year agreement. It's just allowing it to roll into it if the city and, at the end of this five-year contract, I believe we would have to be back here again for the council to approve that additional five years, and it would be open for negotiation at that point.
Just one other thing that I think might address Ms. McGinnis's point. The people involved that we're talking about here are the volunteer ambulance drivers. They're not the paid ambulance drivers, so there are no salaries involved. Yes, that, well, I assume so.
Yes, the vehicles are insured, and we do carry insurance for our members who operate down there, both workers' comp and liability.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, Sam Pinto and then Mr. Lester.
Good evening, Sam Pinto, Long Beach Professional Firefighters. I actually have a handful of questions and wondering if we want to do a back-and-forth engagement or have me ask the questions first?
I think at this time, we want, we need to get the questions answered, so go ahead and start.
First question, when is this contract starting?
The existing contract expires 12/31/19, so this would take effect January 1st.
Is it possible that we could table this contract just to get better understanding? Would there be any shortfalls in regards to tabling it so we could get a better understanding for the council and the residents?
Okay, so hold that one and just...
I believe the Atlantic Beach Commissioner is under a gun to submit their budget, I was actually do believe at the end of September to the Town of Hempstead, who collects their taxes for them. I believe that would open us up for them to look elsewhere for the entire service. I know there are two other fire departments on the other side of the bridge, both the Lawrence Cedarhurst and Inward Fire Department, that would take it in a heartbeat. Inward Fire Department had the contract for over 50 years before we got it 30 years ago. So that is that risk. It was on for the prior meeting. It was pulled because I was unable to be here, and I know I've gone back and forth with all the council members to answer a lot of the questions.
Okay. Third question?
Sure, understandable. What, sorry, Scott, sorry. Real quick, just so you know, I emailed the city manager and the fire commissioner about six weeks ago because I received word from members of Atlantic Beach that they were unhappy with the delivery of service being given by the Long Beach Fire Department, and there was conversation of Long Beach being a breach of their contract. He responded to me, "How'd you hear that?", and he then never responded ever again. I'm sorry, the city manager responded, "How'd you hear that?", and then he never responded again, even though I asked him questions. My, which I don't understand why he would try to maintain that type of dialogue, but he's not here anymore. So the question is, is why are we being born the difference of this $37,500? And how many calls does Atlantic Beach call for the City of Long Beach?
In 2018, we responded to Atlantic Beach 176 times, 72 of them being EMS. From the hours of 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, we are the primary EMS agency for the Atlantic Beach Fire District. During the daytime hours, it is very hard to get especially an advanced life support crew from the volunteers to respond down there. As the national standard, everywhere throughout the country, you're going to paramedic-type EMS care. It is the golden standard. It is what people are looking for, to be treated in the field by paramedics, an extension of a hospital emergency room. We were unable to guarantee that to them based upon our current system. And that's when they reached out to Lawrence Cedarhurst, and they struck a deal with Lawrence Cedarhurst, and then came to us and asked us for the concession.
Okay. Is the medic that they're providing, so just so we understand, Atlantic Beach is not hiring a paramedic, they're retaining a medic from Lawrence Cedar's Fire Department, so now the City of Long Beach, because we are unable to provide the service in our contract, are now subsidizing another fire department to deliver that service. Meanwhile, we do have the resources in town that are able to handle the call volume. Very simply, we handle 4,000, 4,600, 4,800 calls a year, majority of them are EMS. Commissioner just stated there's only about 150 calls calling to Atlantic Beach, 75 of them are EMS. So we really don't, we don't have an overwhelming burden being caused by this contract, and it would make sense using, to use all our available resources. With that being said, it really doesn't make sense to me, and I have not seen, as the president of the collective, of the union and seeing the collective bargaining agreement, that there's anything contractually wrong with us going to the page force, going to Atlantic Beach. I don't see it, I don't know it, and we'll be glad to provide that service on behalf of the city. There's nothing in our contract that says that we can't be primary for everything, and we're willing to offer that service. And I don't believe that it'll be an overwhelming burden of 75 EMS calls a year compared to our 4,000-plus that we do every year, that we shouldn't be able to provide that service easily. And I also don't agree with the fact you need that much more staff, because oftentimes in Long Beach alone, we get two, three, or four calls. And we haven't increased our staff over times for the two, three, and four calls happening at once, so saying that 75 calls a year is less than, you know, think about how many days are in a year, really wouldn't need to add two more personnel. Lastly, I'd just like to bring up that this contract is due for five years, right? Atlantic Beach Rescue is paying $75,000 for a single fly car first responder, which is not guaranteed to be a medic, because I know a few of them, they're also critical care technicians, so they're not all paramedics. They're paying $75,000 a year, Long Beach is paying half. Long Beach is only receiving $96,000 a year or less to provide an entire fire department. Think about it, who's getting the better deal? Is Long Beach under charging? Is Atlantic Beach paying too much? Or are we now serving the needs for Lawrence Cedarhurst to cover their taxes compared to us providing the service that we guaranteed? Thank you.
All right. Did you want to respond, Commissioner Kemmings?
Like I said, for the last 30 years, we've had this contract, for the last 30 years under normal circumstances, the paid firefighters have not responded down there except in a few emergent situations, some working fires, some serious AED cases. You can, as a council, I believe, decide to give this work to the bargaining unit. It then will become their work for perpetuity, and at some point down the road, I'm sure the taxpayers will pay for this, you know, but I'm your fire commissioner, I'm telling you what, where we are with what we have. This is, this is new, you know, and you, as the legislative body, can decide to do with it how you see fit. And I'm going to leave you with that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lester? Thank you, Mr. Pinto.
Just wanted to say, if we could, if we could table this for more discussion, it'd be great.
It was noted, thank you.
Roy Lester, I have to echo what Ms. McGinnis said. I don't understand how you can enter into, well, not enter into, even put out there with the option to renew a contract that goes on for 10 years without it going up one penny. I mean, it's as if you think that the prices won't go up in the next 10 years, and that's what we're putting out there. And I don't think that's fair for taxpayers, because you know the prices are going to go up, even if it's just gas. Let's say nobody got a raise in 10 years, which you know in this city is not happening. But even if it's just gas, the price is exactly the same. Well, actually, we're losing money because, because Atlantic Beach is giving a raise to their paramedic, so we're absorbing that raise, so we're actually getting less money the second five years. What kind of planning? Who actually drafted this? Does anyone know? No? All right. Thanks.
It's not that we don't know, but...
Once again, like I said, the second five years is a option.
It states option to renew.
Based on a mutual agreement. If that's the sticking point, and the council wants to amend the resolution and just do the five years, and then during this five-year term, time, plan for changes that, as the legislative body may see fit. I mean, you can do that. I think we're taking the risk of not at least approving the first contract tonight. I think we're taking the risk of losing the entire contract. I can't tell you that will happen, I can't tell you it won't happen, but it is definitely a risk.
Thank you.
Nobody's saying anything about not, well, I'm not saying anything about not approving the first contract, but once again, we're faced with the situation, if you don't do it tonight, we're in trouble. Once again, that's not planning. Sitting there and saying 10 years from now, the price will be exactly the same. Yeah, and yes, it does say, it doesn't actually say, it says it's an option, but why would you even put it on paper, as if you know in 10 years, as if you think in 10 years prices won't go up at all? I, it just, it puzzles me, that's all, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. Are there any other questions and or comments? I recognize Jay Gussler.
Good evening, Jay Gussler, Long Beach.
Good evening.
I would also ask that you guys table us. I know you tabled it last meeting, but really, there's a lot about this not to like, and the fact that the West Atlantic Beach Fire Commission is under a deadline to submit their budget to the Town of Hempstead really isn't our problem. I don't think we should rashly rush into a contract because they waited until the last minute to start negotiations. And in any event, on the substance of it, the fact that they're contracting out for a paramedic from another department, you know, that paramedic is, first of all, it's not a transporting paramedic, which ours are. We meet you at the scene, we evaluate you, we load you into our ambulance, we take you away. This is a guy in a fly car who's basically going to roll up, evaluate you, and call for other resources. You know who those other resources are likely to be? Us. So we'll be sending our people down there anyway. The other thing is, this assumes that their paramedic, their hired paramedic's going to be available for all of those calls 24 hours, 7... available for all of those calls, 24 hours, 7 days a week. They're not. And when they're not, guess who's gonna get that call? We are. So, the 30 years, however long we've been doing it, notwithstanding, the bottom line is, there really isn't any competition for this contract. I certainly wouldn't sleep any better as a resident of West Atlantic Beach, knowing that there's a bridge between me and my emergency responders. So, we're really kinda imagining that there's some competition for this contract, where there really is none. This is a captive audience, and I'm not saying that we should exploit the fact that they're a captive audience, but we should at least be covering our costs associated with providing this service. Residents of Long Beach, and I've said this on past renewals of this contract, the residents of Long Beach should not be subsidizing these other districts. I'm all for being a good neighbor, I'm all for helping them out in their time of need, but we shouldn't be providing a service to them at a lower cost than we provide it to the taxpaying residents of our own district.
Okay, thank you. Michael DeLore.
Good evening. Michael DeLore, Long Beach, this is gonna be very quick. If you do amend it, or if you adopt it tonight, all that I ask that you do is just change in the area of the resolution down here, where it says, "Resolved by the city council of the city of Long Beach, New York, that the," and insert "acting." And then, in the very last line on the bottom, where it says provisions as the, and just insert acting. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions and/or comments? Yes, Commissioner?
Just wanted to clarify one comment, like Mr. Gussler did bring up, the paramedic does respond down there in a fly car. The Atlantic Beach Rescue Incorporated has an ambulance, and if it gets a driver, it will respond to the scene, and the paramedic or EMTCC, the advanced life support provider from Lawrence Cedarhurst Rescue, will get on that ambulance and transport that patient. So, our ambulance would not have to respond down there. There are times that our ambulance might have to respond down there, if the Atlantic Beach Rescue ambulance doesn't get out during those hours of 6:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night. But now we can respond down there with just a chauffeur, and once again, that EMTCC or paramedic can get on our ambulance. So, it does save us personnel, and a lot of times, our vehicle responding down there.
Commissioner, did you do an estimate on how many calls might be reduced during the day as a result of them having that paramedic for our response down there?
Since the paramedic has been in service the last two months or so, it has cut our EMS responses down by more than half, that our ambulance does not have to respond down there. So, it leaves that ambulance sitting here in the center of Long Beach, so it is available if we need it within the city.
Just one other question before we go. So, if a patient is transported in our ambulance, does the Lawrence Cedarhurst paramedic, EMT, whatever the person's qualification, do they ride in our ambulance with the patient?
That is correct. All the EMTCCs or paramedics are New York State certified. One other thing that was brought up, as far as the cost, even with the reduced contract based upon the amount of calls responded there last year, we receive almost $580 per call on the breakdown of the new rates. Once again, there's no salary involved, there is some wear and tear on the vehicles, and fuel are our only cost, and based upon my estimation, that I emailed some numbers out today, it is still very cost-effective for the city, there is a large profit involved for the city, taking out our operating expenses.
All right, thank you. We're gonna move on to item number four. Mr. Morando?
Item four, hold on, item four is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to enter into an agreement for the construction work for the North Shore Bulkhead Project.
Okay, this is the, one of the projects under the governor's community reconstruction plan. There was a $12.1 million earmarked for this North Shore Bulkhead Project. Bids were received in the Departments of Public Works on September 5th. The low bidder was Woodstock Construction Group at a cost of $9,906,260. It's actually $1.5 million below the engineer's estimate. Woodstock is a reputable contract that has recently successfully completed construction of the Minnesota Avenue Comfort Station. Project includes installation of new bulkheads on the east side of Doyle Street, Saracen Canal and Heron Street canals, and all west end street ends of Butting Reynolds Channel west of New York Avenue. The bulkhead located on West Bay Drive between Magnolia and Washington Boulevard will remain, however, the existing cap railing will be removed, and a new concrete cap will be constructed atop the steel bulkhead. The existing rail will be reinstalled on the new cap, and existing steel bulkhead will be scraped, primed, and coated. The new bulkhead and caps will be installed at a base flood elevation, which varies, but is generally between nine feet and 10 feet, and AVD in the project area. We anticipate commencing construction on this in November of this year. It's about an 18-month project, and once we receive a detailed schedule from the contractor, we will be meeting again, as we already had one meeting with all the residents that'll live along those bulkheads to review what, how the work is going to proceed.
All right, are there questions from members of the council?
Just, just one, and I don't know if you have this number just off the top of your head, when this project is completed on a North Shore, about what percentage of city-owned property will have FEMA compliant bulkheads?
Well, we'll be doing, we'll be going out to bid for the critical infrastructure bulkhead, so I would say maybe about 50%, Joe?
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know if you did.
Yeah, once the, once the critical infrastructure bulkhead is done, pretty much, that's all the public bulkhead has done then.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, now we'll open up the floor to our public. Are there questions from the residents with respect to item number four? Yes, Joel Mikkio?
Hi, Joel Mikkio, Michigan Street in the West End. This is directed to John, congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
Regarding the bulkheads, I had sent you a letter, and I know you got a lot of things on your plate, and a few of the council members I'd spoken with, about when the bulkheads are rebuilt, if there's a possibility of looking into restoring bay access to different parts of Long Beach. In the West End, for example, we have at least 10 streets that have over 50 feet, or approximately 50 feet, I think it's 48 feet exactly, where it's public-owned land that is open to the bay. And in the east end, by the canals, in those areas, it's approximately 30 feet at the end of each street that meets the bay. This is publicly-owned property that I think would increase the value and the resident enjoyment of the, their areas, to be able to walk down with a roll-down on wheels, a kayak, or a paddleboard, whereas many people I know are afraid to do this in the ocean, and as you know, it's not safe even for some competent swimmers to lug something like that through there. So, there are plenty of inexpensive and affordable floating docks made out of polyethylene that can be removed very easily, literally, I mean, a few thousand dollars, $10,000, $15,000, you can set up something like that. Is that something that could be considered?
That could be considered down the road, but as part of this approval process would go, so I don't think they would approve that for us at this point, but that's something the city could look at doing.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you very much.
And I remember our discussions on this.
Yes, you and I spoke at the West End Neighbors Meeting about it. Thank you very much.
Excellent idea, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we move on to item number five.
And finally, item five is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to enter into three contracts for the construction of lifeguard headquarters and comfort stations with the lowest responsible bidders.
Okay, as a result of Hurricane Sandy, almost all the beachfront structures, including lifeguard headquarters, were destroyed. To date, we have reconstructed the following ones, Lincoln Boulevard, Comfort Station, Riverside Boulevard, Edwards Boulevard, National Boulevard, Grand Boulevard, and Minnesota Avenue. The only three remaining to be reconstructed are the comfort stations at New York Avenue and Neptune, as well as lifeguard headquarters at Riverside Boulevard. Bids were received in the Department of Public Works on September 9, 2019. The bid was broken down into three contracts to comply with the Wicks Law. Wicks Law requires that when a project is over a million and a half dollars, you have to bid separate general contracts, separate electrical, and separate plumbing. So, the results was followed, the low bidder for general construction was Construction Consultants of Long Island, $3,200,000. Electric, the low bid was Hagland Energy Corp., $175,000. Plumbing was Macaron Plumbing Incorporated, $391,599, for total cost of the project of $3,568,599. To date, the city has spent approximately $8,258,107 to replace the six comfort stations at Lincoln, Riverside, Edwards, National, Grand, and Minnesota, respectively. The city was awarded $9,332,610 through FEMA, the public assistance program for replacement of the structures, nine were, of the nine that were destroyed. Therefore, FEMA PA funds remaining are $1,062,502. Thus, the total city funding that is necessary to replace all nine structures is $2,569,622, on average, $278,045 for building. The new structures are elevated, erected on piles, and comprised of precast concrete. And just one thing to the comfort station at Neptune and New York, we'll also have a small lifeguard quarters for what they call the east crew and the west crew.
Are there any questions from members of the council?
In the resolution, it says that $1,447,822 will be available upon borrowing in February 2020. Is that bonds that have already been approved?
Those bonds were authorized, yes.
Okay. Just, and I'm just going down memory lane a little, I know Mr. Fabrizio was trying to use the argument of trying to replace square footage, you know?
Correct.
For square foot. I guess that kinda fell apart at the end, which is why?
No, no, actually, Joe, if it wasn't for Joe, we would've gotten $0 more from FEMA.
Oh, okay.
Joe did convince FEMA that they were replacing value. Joe convinced them what they really needed to replace was square footage. So, what FEMA did, based on Joe's recommendations, they went back, figured the total square footage of buildings that were replaced already, what the total cost of that was, came up with a per-square-foot cost, and then based on the total amount, gave us that much more money. They actually gave us 2.1 million, Joe?
Yeah, basically, we gave off with $9.3 million.
Okay. So, essentially, what we're doing is, we exceeded the old square footage, that's why this is.
That's why it's smaller.
Right, right. That's what I was trying to, so we exceeded the old square footage.
In addition to, when we designed lifeguard headquarters, we wanted to really upgrade lifeguard headquarters, and that building is also being built, so that in the future, if we get a generous donation from somebody, because there were a couple people that were interested, we can add a second floor to that. That will have an observation deck on the top, and it's actually a great spot, it'll be a glass railing around, it's a great spot for visibility on the beach, so, you know, so there's plenty of depth to that building to be able to add a second floor eventually.
Question, I see, we're gonna open it up to the public, I see Michael DeLore, and then Elizabeth Treston.
Michael DeLore, Long Beach, New York. John, just to clarify, if you would, the current funding, and if you have it in front of you, just let me.
Yes, I have it in front of me.
Current funding was $2,107,000, that's already been budgeted for and allocated. The 2020 city funding, and I apologize, council members, I just had one copy, is what is to be bonded for in February, the $1,0150.
Correct.
Okay.
And there's some additional money that's coming from the Sandy Relief Fund bond that was passed to be able to cover additional costs on this project. That was a $10 million bond.
Right.
Where there's still about 8.65, 8.6 million available.
Okay. Part two of it, which is kinda related, but unrelated, as far as private donations, that I heard that a member of the Long Beach Lifeguard alumni, or some kind of affiliate thereof, was willing to make a donation in memory of this person's relative. I don't know if that person, or people, or persons are still interested in doing that. I welcome it, that's part one. And part two is, since there are lifeguard stations, east crew, west crew, where they store their equipment, I don't know if there's any other alumni that would consider a, making a donation in memory of, above the access point for their equipment. This is all just means by which you can memorialize a former member, and ability to raise funds, and to give some people the ability to reflect, you know, when they go to the beach, as you see memorial parks all over Long Beach. I think that's all I have at this point, but there will be questions, I'll reserve for good and welfare, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, just so you know, the original person who was gonna make a donation, a fairly sizable donation, had been brought to the city from some of the lifeguards, including the chief of lifeguards, and he withdrew his request for his support, so.
But it may generate in the future, or is that?
Sure, and that's why the building is designed to take a second floor.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know that some members of the West End, when the Minnesota bathroom went up, they were surprised at what it looked like. Is there any rendition that people can see of the facilities before it's built? Something that it looked like?
It's gonna be very similar to the, to the.
To the one on Minnesota? With, so it would look like the one on Minnesota?
It will be.
With the availability of a second floor on top of that?
No, the ones at Neptune and New York will not have an availability for a second floor, only the one at Riverside, and the one at Riverside is completely different. The lifeguard headquarters is, has been laid out with a communication room, and other, you know, shape-up areas, a spot for recreation, to be able to talk to people about events that are going on. And in addition, the front portion of the building is gonna be all glass, going back about 10 feet, Joe?
Yes.
On each side, so that the lifeguards have an observation area from not only the observation deck, but also from the first floor. We sat down with the lifeguards, and they helped really lay out that building.
But, can the residents see what it looks like? Is there a rendition somewhere?
The two bathrooms on Neptune and New York are gonna be very similar to the Minnesota bathroom.
Again, well.
And the reason was to keep a low, was to keep a low profile, and kinda try to match the wood, you know, the fading of the wood decking around it, so.
But again, is there a way that people can see that? Because not everyone's going to go to Minnesota.
Yeah, we can have a copy of the rendering put up on, on the website.
Thank you.
Just one quick question, the lifeguard headquarters aren't gonna have public bathrooms facing the boardwalk in them, right?
The lifeguard headquarters will only have an internal bathroom for the lifeguards.
For the lifeguards, but it won't be a public bathroom.
No, and there's a bathroom very close by there, so.
Are there any other questions from members of the public? Seeing none, we move forward.
Item one is an order to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding water and water distribution. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Diamond.
Yes.
Councilmember Aramo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Vice President Fendo.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes.
Item two is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to enter into agreements for auto body repair services for the city of Long Beach vehicles on an as-needed basis. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Diamond.
Yes.
Councilmember Aramo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Vice President Fendo.
Yes.
President Moore. President Moore.
Yes.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to enter to and renew the agreement with the Atlantic Beach Fire District. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Diamond.
Yes.
Councilmember Aramo.
I'd just like to thank Commissioner Kimmens for all his work on this item. I vote yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Vice President Fendo.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the city, the acting city manager to enter into an agreement for the construction work for the North Shore Bulkhead Project. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Diamond.
Yes.
Councilmember Aramo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Vice President Fendo.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes.
Finally, item five is a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to enter into three contracts for the construction of lifeguard headquarters and comfort stations with the lowest responsible bidders. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Diamond.
Commissioner, Acting City Manager Morando, I know this design and all the phases of this project were extensive and took quite a bit of time, and I just want to thank you for all of your work, as well as your staff, for all the work that went into getting this project off the ground. I think it's going to be great. With that, I vote yes.
Councilmember Aramo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Vice President Fendo.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes.
City Manager's monthly personnel report has been filed by the city clerk, who'll make a motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Okay, voting, Councilmember Diamond.
Yes.
Councilmember Aramo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Vice President Fendo.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes. Commissioner Tagney, before you leave, if you can just stay for one moment, we just have one or two questions that were unresolved since the last two meetings. I appreciate it, thank you. We're going to move forward with respect to our good and welfare portion, and I'm going to ask the commissioner to come forward at this time. Thank you for being here tonight, Commissioner. Most recently, there were questions with respect to the enforcement as it relates to some vandalism in the Canals area, and so now that the time has changed and it's darker earlier, will there be any additional presence, police presence in the Canals with respect to addressing some of the vandalism that's taken place?
Well, a very interesting thing happened with that. The individual that was doing the vandalism of the fences, his parents came forward and made restitution and ensured us that they would take appropriate punishment measures to correct his behavior, and we haven't had vandalism since that incident.
Okay, excellent. Second, for the past two, three meetings, there've also been some concerns with respect to having a police presence on East Walnut Street, right off of Roosevelt Boulevard. This is, again, there are many cars that are, for whatever reason, just completely ignoring the stop sign there, and there are four signs in that little intersection, and I had the opportunity to go over there, and within less than five minutes, I saw myself, nine people that just went completely straight through the lights. So again, is there any way for us to address this? Because people are speeding en route to work, trying to get to, for the most part, I guess, that would be Lido Boulevard, and then also getting onto the Luke Parkway, and there are a lot of children that are, that are passing. Is there anything that we can do to address that?
Yes, that is a bus stop, and we do have officers that do get posted there at times. In addition, we just resurfaced or reconstructed Pacific Boulevard, which leads to a very smooth surface and is conducive, that's one of the unintended consequences of doing improvements, is that cars tend to drive faster, but we can definitely add additional enforcement in that area.
Okay, and then my last question is, I believe it was last week, some of the residents pointed out that there were a couple of signs that stated Ocean Beach Park, and they were misspelled. I don't know if you were aware of that situation, but again, just once again, if there's anything that we're doing in terms of those signs to make corrections, or are we just going to wait until next year in terms of those Ocean Beach Park signs?
Yes, there were a couple of signs that lifeguard was spelt incorrectly. Those signs have been identified and removed, and the, I don't know who ordered them, but whoever did has to be a little more careful when they accept the order, that they are made properly.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions for the commissioner before we move on to the good and welfare? Any other questions from the members of the council?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank you and your officers for providing the additional patrols in and around houses of worship over the Jewish holiday that just passed, and the continued increased patrols that are anticipated over the next few weeks as the residents observe the different Jewish holidays, so thank you very much.
It's our pleasure.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you so much for your time, Commissioner. Have a good evening.
All right, we'll hear from Liz Treston.
I have a couple of questions. First, Happy New Year to all. As Mr., is Mr. Capizola still providing any services to the city, to specific city personnel, or has his services been completed?
Mr. Capizola is representing the city and its investigations, which are still ongoing.
Mr. Capizola's response, not the draft, should be foible. As a New York State Comptroller has not stated that it is otherwise. Can we get a copy of that?
So...
His response, not the draft...
Right, the draft audit, as you know, is non-final, and the response is in a trap, attachment to the draft audit. So once the audit becomes final, the response will be in the appendix, and at that point, it will be a public document. Until then, the New York State Comptroller's Office has asked us not to allow it to be foiled, to keep it confidential.
Can you produce that, where that says that, that it's not foible?
It says it right on the face of the document, but I called the New York State Comptroller's Office and received the callback from their legal division, which asked us to keep it confidential until it was final.
The draft or, and the response, they're two separate?
I asked about the draft audit, but the response is about the draft audit and is an appendix to it, so until that full report is final, it's, it's not subject to foil.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The Honorable Denise Ford.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Good evening to everybody, and congratulations, Mr. Morando, on taking on the city manager's job.
Thank you.
Okay, must be crazy, but what can I say?
Probably.
I just, I just have a couple of quick things. Just as a follow-up then, with what Liz Treston was asking, when, since the state comptroller now has, I guess, sort of has the city's response, when will the audit be finalized and be available for the public to view?
That's a good question for the New York State Comptroller. I don't know what deadlines they're operating under, and I don't want to speak for them or constrain them in any way.
Okay, and then I'd like to then know why, my question was, why didn't the city council get to review the letter, I mean, before the response, before it was sent up to Albany?
So, if I may elaborate on that, I thank you for asking that question, because I've been kind of waiting for a good opportunity to explain that. As an attorney, I am an agent of a principal, all right? I derive all my, I don't act in a vacuum, basically. I'm directed to act by my principal, and I act on behalf of the principal. What happened in this circumstance was the principal was the Corporation Counsel slash Acting City Manager, Robert Agostisi, who put this assignment on me and Mr. Capizolo while recusing himself. He said, "You guys are to submit this response. I don't want to see it, I don't want to have anything to do with it, but you are to submit this response on my behalf," you know, on behalf of the city manager and the city, basically. So that's, that's, that's how it came to be. I mean, I regularly submit legal papers on behalf of the city without council approval. I think, you know, certainly, we have that ability under the Corporation Counsel section of the charter, but that's how this specific circumstance came to be. I was told by my boss that I needed to do something, and I did my job, and that was really it. I wasn't trying to, you know, stir anything or create any controversy or anything else.
And I thank you very much for your honesty, and, but I guess when you say that you're guided by principle, is that ending in PAL or PLE?
That, that question always confuses me, too.
Is it the principles of your office, then? Basically, the tenants that, which you serve the public?
I mean, the, the charter defines who my principles are. In this circumstance, it was the city manager slash Corporation Counsel who supervises all the employees. At the time, I was an assistant Corporation Counsel. I would answer to the Corporation Counsel, who would then be answerable to the city manager and/or the city council. I know it complicates things when somebody has a dual role, but my assignment was clear, and my assignment was to draft a response with Mr. Capizolo and to submit it.
Okay, so then, when you think of, but the problem is that the principal in question, basically, was clouded in a shroud of a conflict of interest, considering that he himself got an additional payment, and he was under, he obviously is under investigation. So when you think about this, on behalf of the city, and I hope then, as a caution to all our city council members, that you take this seriously, you know, the fact that people can act independently without any input from any of you, that when we have seen, and I feel bad, because I live in the city now for almost forty years, and the people who also live here and pay taxes and had trust, their trust put into the city government, but obviously, we've all realized now with the course of events, and thank you, John, for bringing this to our attention last year, that we've all been bamboozled. You know, we thought that everything was acting accordingly to the best interests of the residents here in the City of Long Beach, when indeed, it has not been. Because when you provide an answer, I mean, when you look at and you hear about excerpts from this draft from the state comptroller, that the payouts and what has been going on for so many years, and then it really cascaded into something even bigger under the tenure of Jack Schneerman, when you look since 2012, and based on who got what and a hundred percent of sick days, and, you know, they can't, nobody can even provide any type of documentation to support any of these, these payouts. That we look at this, and then when we look at, we, there's a draft audit that was sent for a response from the city, and so you have the city manager who got one of the payouts, who was under, basically, under investigation, as you're saying, that there has been investigations going on.
No, no, but if, but if I could be clear, just about one thing, Legislative Ford, is that Mr. Agostisi recused himself from this project.
Exactly.
I handled it alone with our outside counsel, and to my knowledge, he has never even seen the response.
Right, and, but let me remind you then, that that outside counsel, who was not endorsed by the city council at all, because they didn't vote on his appointment, they have not voted on any of the monies that he's received, they have not claimed, you have not, have you voted for any of the money that he has collected? Have any of you said yes or no to any of this? So therefore...
No, we have not.
When you look at this, even though Agostisi recused himself, you allowed the person that he hired to answer the response, and this is where I have an issue.
Well, to be, to be clear, Acting City Manager Tagney hired him. He was the Acting City Manager at the time with his retention, not Agostisi.
And, and let me remind you that Acting City Manager Tagney was also under investigation for a payout, while he still remains on... So what I'm asking you is that, and I understand you acted in accordance with what you thought was with the law, but I think that the law and some of the things need to be changed. I am sad, and by the fact that the city did certify the letter that was sent out by then or act, or now Acting City Manager. But then I, now I want to know, have we received, as a follow-up also with Liz Treston's, and I'm sorry, because we've been doing back and forth, has, have you received from Capizolo, whatever his name is, this lawyer, have you actually received the records of all of the hours that he spends so far, who he saw, who he interviewed, who did he meet with, and to justify and actually what we paid him so far? Do we have those records?
Yeah, Mr. Capizolo submits legal bills, and as is the custom and practice of the lawyer profession, they write down what they do and the amount of time that they do it, and they send you the bill.
And everyone on the city council has seen it?
Um, no, I don't, I don't believe so.
The only information we were given is as of several weeks ago, he had been paid ninety-two thousand dollars.
That's correct. We received that information.
So my, I'm going to be quick now, okay?
Okay, because you need to wrap up. Thank you.
Were subpoenas issued in regard to this investigation, to any of the people here in the city? You're allowed to say it, because Madeline Singer said, she can't comment, but in her letter to me, she said that if the people who received the subpoenas will admit that they received it, well, it's okay.
No.
Did anyone in the city receive...
Legislative Ford, I really don't feel comfortable discussing an ongoing criminal investigation, notwithstanding...
Okay, I'm just asking about subpoenas. That has nothing to do with the investigation.
And, and on every subpoena that I've ever received, whether it's these investigations or others, there's language about obstruction of justice and to keep the existence of the subpoena confidential. So with all due respect, I intend to do that.
Okay, and then I hope then during this investigation that you actually look at all of this, and then even, you know, one of the glaring facts, when everybody says, "Well, they got paid, and they got the hours and a hundred percent," I really think, and I, I feel like I just keep banging this drum incessantly, is that I find it very interesting that nobody in the city brings up the second paid, payment made to Jim Lockaruba, where he collected over twenty thousand dollars for, when he worked the first ten months out of the year as a temporary employee, not accruing any days, but yet he works for two months and gets a payout of over twenty-two thousand dollars. You know what? I'd love to have that type of job, to make that kind of money. Thank you.
And if I may...
All right, thank you. Thank you.
And Legislative Ford, if I could just add something, you made a point, Mr. Kalnisky made a point, he was doing what his boss told him to, which is what he's supposed to do. His boss works for the council, and his boss chose to ignore the council's directive, and I think that has to be pointed out.
And thank you. And that's something, as a city council, you start looking at this charter and start realizing, and it's up to you, that you're the elected officials, okay? You appoint a city manager, but when that city manager, I mean, we do it in the legislature. You know, the county executive is, is actually elected on her own or his own, but anytime they want to appoint somebody to run a department, that commissioner has to come before the legislature to be approved, okay, so to show that we're all working together. This city has been operating in a vacuum for far too long, and the people who have suffered are the people sitting behind me and everybody else who sits outside this building.
Thank you. June Schechter.
June Schechter, State Street. I've been here before.
Yes.
I'm going to beat the drum again. I'm here to register my disapproval and dismay at the actions of what is now called Mount Sinai slash Oceanside Hospital concerning what amounts to a land grab in our neighborhood. To recap, Mount Sinai, formerly Oceanside Hospital, is attempting to use a residential parcel to construct a doctor's office complex. This proposed medical arts pavilion location is a residential parcel. As I walk along the street, I can see the paving stones that define driveways, the stumps of ornamental shrubbery that once decorated these parcels, representing what was a quiet, peaceful street. Not one of the residents in this area would oppose Mount Sinai's building this medical arts pavilion, doctor's offices, on the site of the former hospital on the other side of Bay Drive. All of us oppose the current proposed location, as it would forever alter the nature of our neighborhood, rendering it essentially a commercially zoned property in the midst of our homes. Adding insult to injury, Mount Sinai bought Long Beach Medical Hospital at bankruptcy prices, received FEMA money to restore medical services to our barrier island, diverted the bulk of that money to their Oceanside campus, giving us what was to be a temporary fix for an emergency room, which is now a permanent solution. Now, here's the elephant in the room. Mount Sinai can sell the undeveloped parcel of land, they have five point two acres, approximately, after they use up all the FEMA money. So Mount Sinai wants to push this complex into the furthest corner of that parcel of land, into our front lawns, basically, to preserve the bulk of this parcel so that they could sell it off at a premium. Is this good for Long Beach? I say no. Why ruin a neighborhood for their greed and with disregard to the medical needs of our barrier island? Thank you.
Thank you. And June, I'm not sure if you are aware of the fact that during the previous meeting... And June, I'm not sure if you are aware of the fact that during the previous meeting, I shared that I had been in conversation with the South Nassau Hospital, Mount Sinai, and I asked them if they were willing to meet with the members of State Street, along with the North Bay, the civics, as well as the East Home. They said that they were, they were willing to do that, but they would not do that until, for the most part, the end of October.
Right.
And so, we're going to hold them to that, and we'll make sure that that meeting takes place.
Thank you.
Okay, so we didn't forget, okay?
Thanks very much.
All right, Sam Pinto?
Good evening, Sam Pinto, just three comments for Good and Welfare. First one, could we just get a clarification on the equipment that was donated for Kathleen Rice and where it's going and how it was obtained?
Okay, we'll hear from the commissioner.
It was done through a FEMA grant, I know that much.
It was obtained through a FEMA grant, approximately just shy of $100,000, to purchase three new LifePak-15 cardiac monitors, defibrillators, pacers. One unit is going on the professional ambulance 2319. The second unit is going on the professional engine 2343. And the third unit will go on ambulance 2321. The units that are being replaced, the best one will go on the backup ambulance 2322, which is mostly manned by the paid firefighters also. And then we will have two spare units needed if one does break down. The grant was put through under the volunteer fire department. They paid for the grant rider, just like we've done previously for AirPACs, and they're given out through the entire department, it's not just for the volunteers.
I appreciate that clarification, so just so we understand that the grant is going to the city of Long Beach Fire Department, not the volunteer fire department, not to discredit or anything where it's due, but the press release that went out in Newsday, as well as your opening statements tonight, just to clarify that it's going to everyone, not just the volunteers. Because some people reached out to me saying that that may have been an intentional error, just to discredit the service that the paid force does, which I found hard to believe, and obviously thanking Commissioner Kevins for clarifying that. Second thing is, since that, the Land of Beach Fire District contract has been approved, understandable. The only thing I ask is that we will have a work session together with the members of the unions, we can help better serve the residents and our contracted services, because it's news to me that, you know, this will be an overwhelming burden to provide the service for everyone, as well as any contractual obligations against us responding. While I have not received an official copy of the contract, I would be under the expectation, based off of old contracts, that the paid force is expected to provide services as well and should not be cut out. Lastly, I just want to thank all the firefighters and first responders and EMS workers, paid and volunteer for their work this week. On Sunday, we were, I had the opportunity to witness two fires, and luckily, nobody was hurt. And it should just show that there's a risk involved, and just the good service that was delivered this Sunday, and I want to thank them for that, thank you.
And thank you for all of your service to our community. Roy Lester?
You know, just one thing to clarify, in my information on the Long Beach Fire Department grant, there was no intention to single out anything, it's just that this was done through the volunteer fire service that they applied for the FEMA grant. They were the ones that applied for it, that's all this message said. It didn't say it wasn't for the benefit of the whole fire department, so, you know, it's not.
I mean, understand, hopefully that was, that's the right position, it just continuously said volunteer fire department while it was processed by the grant guys, because I know them, and it's going to 75% of the equipment or whatever it is, 66%.
Again, in the whole statement, I said volunteer fire department once.
Twice.
Okay?
And in Newsday.
I'd also like to thank Fire Commissioner Kevins and the volunteer force for helping us obtain this funding. They're the ones that did it. So I gave the credit to where it belonged.
Well, it should go to the Long Beach Fire Department, that's pretty much where it went.
Well, the equipment is going to the Long Beach Fire Department, but I never said, I never cut the paid fire department out of here, don't put words in my mouth.
I think there are two items here.
Listen, as long as it's not a slide, I don't expect it to be, thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely, it was not a slide, it was just recognizing who, who got the grant, that's all.
The first line.
I think there's a difference between the press release and the actual statement here, and I think what you're saying, basically just to translate, is that the language should be inclusive.
Sounds fair, thank you so much, thank you for clarification.
Sure, I get the easy ones out of the way quickly. Are we mandated to have it, to publish our meeting minutes from the city council meetings?
Yeah, we publish the proceedings after every meeting.
Please use a microphone so you can.
Yeah, we publish in the newspaper.
No, but it's also on the website, if you go on the council page.
No, I know on the website, I'm talking about the newspaper, are we mandated to put it in the newspaper?
Yes, by choice.
Okay, I looked, I couldn't find that. All right, the other thing, I've been talking a long time about the boardwalk, the bike lanes and stuff. I just have some pictures to show you. We're allowing people to put tables and stuff like that all the way up to the bike lane, so people who are walking, if anybody can take the pictures, I can't get across to you guys.
Sure, I'd like to see this picture.
So anybody who's walking there has to go into the bike lane. And the bike lanes aren't marked, I've been saying this on and off.
And we're aware of that, yes.
Yeah, and so I don't know why the city allows people to put their tables right up to the bike lanes, put the tables and the signs, but it's certainly a safety issue, and I just don't understand it. Our third thing is, have we gotten anywhere with the city manager's search firm? Have we done anything with it? Were we waiting?
Not at this time, we were really focusing in on the issue at hand, which was the response from the comptroller and the city council not being included in that, in that final report. So we will have information for you forthcoming.
Okay, and I guess I'm confused about that. As I understand from corporate counsel, you were mandated to give that to the comptroller's office.
I was directed by my boss to do an assignment and submit it, and I did.
But you didn't submit it until a new city manager was here, correct?
I submitted it on the date I submitted it. When it was done, you know, that's when I submitted.
Which was just the other day.
It was submitted the week before I became city manager.
And nobody knew it? Because we sat here last time, and we talked about a 45-day extension to submit it, and nobody knew, and you didn't mention to anybody that you had submitted it already?
No, right after I submitted it, I sent it to the entire city council, and I told them that I submitted it.
So right after, so when you guys were here last week, talking about a 45-day extension, you already knew it had been submitted? You knew, Ms. Moore?
No.
Well, he just said he sent it to you.
He sent the final report, he did not indicate that it was already sent to the state.
He had already submitted it.
I'm answering your question, that's the whole purpose of us going through this, is the fact that the city council was left out of that process. When, when I attended the exit conference, right, when I attended that date, the whole purpose of me being there at the exit conference was to ask, on behalf of the members of the city council, that our response be included in that final report.
And that's why you asked for the 45-day extension?
That's exactly right.
But what Mr. Kalinsky says is he had already given you notice that he had already given the.
Absolutely, and that's where, that's where we're having the contention, that's the issue at hand.
No, I don't understand, so you knew he had already submitted it? Okay, I'm hearing two different things.
I just want to clarify one thing. I believe originally, the extension was asked to September 30th. Councilman Bendo and I asked for 45 days.
No, September 30th was the original date.
I know that.
We had until September 30th, according to the letter.
But this was handed in before September 30th?
Yes.
Well before September 30th.
Exactly, and that's what makes it problematic.
Well, it's problematic, because it seems that, Mr. Kalinsky, you handed it in, and the city, and then you, after you handed it in, you told the city council, then we were here last week discussing the 45-day extension, and you didn't say, or at least I didn't hear you say, oh, I already handed that in. What am I missing?
Not missing anything.
I think the timeline is a little jostled. The meeting was held on that Monday, my understanding was it was submitted sometime after that.
No, I was just told it was submitted before that.
I'm just telling you my recollection, I wasn't at that meeting, I wasn't including the report.
No, but you just heard him say that, he submitted it before.
I'm trying to give you my timeline.
I wasn't included in that report either.
No, to be clear, it was transmitted to the comptroller's office after the exit, right after the exit conference, and then right after that, I provided it to the council.
Right.
So that Monday, it was given over, but some of us didn't know that meeting actually happened, at which time that report was given over.
Tuesday, you sat there and you talked about a 45-day extension, do you remember that?
Yes, Tuesday, 9:24, that is correct.
Right, did you know that it had already been given in?
No.
We did, we asked that to be rejected.
There would be no reason, I'm talking, I'm referring to the exit conference, okay? I'm referring to the exit conference. This is moments before the report was sent in. It was not, I didn't, I had no knowledge that when I walked out of the exit conference and got in my car to go to work, that this report was being sent, because I would have, well, it was a waste of time for me to waste time at work, when I was in the room asking them on behalf of the city council to do the two things. One, to allow us, to allow our response to be included in that final report that was being sent to the state. That was the only, that was my only reason for being there, and second, to ask for an extension.
Ms. Moore, it was.
All right, two items.
It was more.
Okay, after that time, two of the members of the council then issued a statement. They either issued that statement while I was in the room, after I was in the room, I'm not really sure, but a statement was issued asking for this extension, which is to Councilman Mandel's point. Okay, is that clear?
Yeah, the extension was asked for last Tuesday. Last Tuesday, you guys sat there and said, we want a 45-day extension.
That is correct.
That you did not, and the 45-day extension was to put in that report, so that we would not put in the report of the council hired by Mr. Agostisi. Or Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Tagney.
What we were trying to do is get the comptroller to not accept the report that the staff submitted, because it was not endorsed by the council. So we were trying to get this comptroller to not accept that report and give a 45-day extension, so we could submit a report that there was concurrence on across the board.
Correct.
Okay, so my question is, when was that report put in? It was put in right before the meeting where Mr.?
Well, the exit interview was September 23rd, I'm going from memory, and I believe it was submitted that day, and then we were informed after it was submitted.
Okay, so let me, I just.
Because your time is up, I just want to just make sure that I make this clear. All members, all five members of the council received that report via email through Mr. Greg Kalinsky at the same time. That was, but in that, in that email, it was not clear to us that this was it, it was final, that we would not be given the opportunity to move forward with sending our response. And I think we can go on and on, so I'm going to give you one minute to sum, for summation, and then we're going to move on.
I just don't understand, you knew at the time that a new city manager was being appointed that night or the next, you didn't know? You called the meeting for it.
That was later in the day.
So you didn't know until later in the day that you were calling a meeting to appoint your new city manager?
That is correct, it was confirmed at that time.
I don't believe that, I don't believe that.
You don't have to, but that's the truth.
Yeah, okay.
You can ask, you can ask Mr. Bendo what time he arrived on Monday.
So at that point, you knew you didn't have to put in the response till the 30th? What was the rush?
Are you asking me that question?
Yes, what was the rush? Why, you knew you didn't have to put in the response till the 30th? You knew Mr. Agostisi was resigning?
The response was complete, the exit conference was scheduled, and that's why we had the response ready early, because the comptroller's office wanted to schedule an exit conference, and I thought it would be fruitful to have something to discuss at the exit conference.
Even though you knew you had till the 30th?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mike Delory?
Good evening, Mike Delory. I am not prepared for what I'm about to say, it's based upon what I just heard. Can we universally agree to request an extension till 45 days? I don't know your opinions, maybe I'll poll the board. Councilman Bendo, do you want an extension? Stymon? Okay.
We've asked for it three times.
Yeah, we've asked multiple times for an extension.
Publicly, in letters.
Okay.
Yeah, they had the opportunity to request that, I wasn't included in that, but I see you haven't asked me, and if you had asked me, I would have said yes, because that was the whole purpose of me attending the exit conference.
Well, I thought I asked it on September 17th. On September 17th, I recommended an extension of 45 days. But, okay, let me try to move on to a topic. The optics are not good, obviously, and I'm speaking as, I'm running as a city council candidate, that's number one, and people think that I know what I'm, what's going on, which I don't. I'm just trying to get clarity, so I understand the issue. And I understand you said there's criminal investigations going on. But the optics of Acting City Manager One hiring outside counsel, then Acting City Manager Two becomes also corporation counsel, who then on his exit directs his, I'll call it his second-in-command, to draft a response when you had till September 30th to reply. I'm just confused, and I'll move on, I don't want to, I don't expect an answer. I was asked, there's a Lions Board meeting on this Thursday night, just to follow up on the water fountain. The one question I have is, members in the walks had asked what the orange dots are at the end of each walk. It's my understanding that therefore, there's a design and engineering phase of the water program, as Mr. Miranda and I have been working on. I explained it to them, it's still, it's in a target area of where the underground connections will be placed. There's other questions I'll save, because I don't want to, you know, use up my time, but if you could answer that one question, Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Fabrizio, thank you for all your work. You probably need extra staff, because you're up there, John, and you're over here, and, but I thank you for all your service, but I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, the survey is going on out there, so you'll see different color marks out there.
Okay.
Orange marks will be for gas, red for telephone, underground telephone, blue for water, green for sewer. And the surveyor will, what he'll be doing is doing all the elevations throughout the walks and marking where the existing mains and utilities are, so that we can have a base plan to start to design to replace the water mains and water services to the homes. So we need a base plan first before we actually plot out how it'll finish.
Right, and then that orange mark is, would indicate gas line?
Orange generally indicates gas main, correct.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, orange is telecommunication, yellow is gas.
So we'll see, well.
If it's just a dot, though, it's where they're surveying from.
Right, that may just be a survey.
It basically looks like a dot, it looks like a round. Okay. And I know Councilman Arama, you've had this topic on, you know, your radar for years, and I know, on behalf of people that live there, we appreciate it greatly.
Can anyone speak to the water fountain, hold on, can anyone speak to the water fountain?
Yeah, we had the replacement parts, and we're just waiting to get the plumber over there to put the replacement parts in, and I had asked Beach Maintenance to try to get that done as soon as possible so that we can get the photo op with the Lions Club.
Yeah, and they did move the porta potty away, so that's a step one.
Yes, yeah, so they're already starting to work on it, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Lou Dubow.
Just to clarify before Mr. Dubow speaks, recently, ACM Miranda did send a letter joining in the application for the 45-day extension, I think it's being reviewed by the rest of the council. So just so everybody's on the same page.
Thank you for clarification.
Good evening, Lou Dubow, Long Beach. Congratulations, John. John, congratulations.
Thank you.
I read that you were interested in actually having the job on a permanent basis?
Yeah, I would be, because I think I have something to offer, but if doesn't, when the new council comes in, if they don't feel I'm the right person, I'm fine with that, too. I'm happy working with my buddy Joe over there and getting all the public work stuff done, so.
I think having you as the city manager would be a wise move for the city council to approve, and going forward, whoever might be on city council after that. I think they could, you could stop the search after a year and a half, I guess it is, almost two years? Almost two years, right?
Yes.
Yes, stop with the committee, you have someone I think is well-qualified, I think he knows the city well.
he knows the city well, and that's all I really have to say.
Thank you.
I just think that, John, end the search, you have your man.
Thank you. Leon Baker.
Good evening, council members, Madam President, thank you for letting me speak. Mr. Miranda, I apologize for not congratulating you when I was up here first.
That's okay, thank you.
But congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Well, first, now you're not going to like what I'm going to say.
That's all right.
You know, that little stunt here with Commissioner Tagney, he needs to retire, we need a new commissioner. That was ridiculous, that was rude. I just, the reason why I asked for him to stay is because he came up here before you, made some statements, which I don't believe are accurate, and I wanted to question him about it. When he said, "Oh, we have officers out there in that area who are stationed," I live in that area, I've never seen them, and what I have seen is some of our officers not driving at a safe speed while others do, and now I'm very pro-police, I'm very veteran, hello my shirt, you know what sign I'm on, but, you know, when someone gets up here and they're making a false statement, I wanted to question him in front of everybody, and I'll tell you, if he's the commissioner over the police department, he should be here all night. If he's got a bedtime, then he should be in a different job. You know, that was rude, and the other thing I wanted to bring up is, okay, let's talk about, you know, when you talk about safety, I've been, instead of going out and doing petitions to go ahead and beg and please for safety on our roadways throughout the city, which I think is dumb, I also want to state, I've been going out there talking to police officers, talking to our traffic, who I have found out have no police powers. They have name tags, which our police officers don't. The reason why I've been told by our officers why is that it's supposed to induce a conversation. That's dumb. Give them name tags so we know who they are, and two, you know, in speaking with our traffic, they don't have no police powers, they're just meter maids, they just give out parking tickets, that's it. And I sat there with our traffic out in that area of Roosevelt and Walnut, and we were just watching people speeding by, as, they don't care, and they got the big van out there that says "traffic," and they're just like, "Woo-hoo," and they keep going. And that happens in other parts of our city, too. And when I was talking to our law enforcement out there on the street, because I've been walking up and asking everybody, you know, "How does this work, what do you think?" Many of our law enforcement say, "We need to have a proper traffic divisions with law enforcement in there who have the ability with a traffic car to pull over, give tickets, and implement these unsafe road conditions that we're enduring." Because I'll tell you, at a stop sign, not only do you have one ticket, you have two tickets. You have a person speeding, obviously, because they are driving too fast for road conditions to stop. Two, their failure to stop when they go through that stop sign, that's two tickets that they should be getting hammered on with a fine by our judge for the city. And then anybody who knows the vehicle code would know that, you know, that could get you into bigger and better things. I mean, that's where you get more suspended driver's license, you get drug offense, you get a whole bunch of other things. Felony warrants, I can't even begin to tell you what that opens up. And how do I know this? I know this because I worked for a police department before. My legal knowledge is a wealth of telling that we need to reevaluate, Mr. Miranda, in your position, you've got to reevaluate how we operate, because, you know, with what's going on with our former ACM, Mr. Agan, and everybody involved, I'd better see a lot of people going to jail.
Okay, thank you. Jay Gussler.
Good evening, Jay Gussler, Long Beach. Again, I'm going to apologize, this is a little out of order, I'm just kind of riffing on what I heard earlier, comments by others. Regards to Mr. Capazolo's retention by the city. I believe Mr. Kalnitsky said that he was representing the city, his representation of the city is ongoing because of the investigation, but I've read Mr. Capazolo's retainer agreement, and it states pretty unequivocally that he was hired to represent the city in connection with a grand jury subpoena. That's actually in bold letters in his retainer agreement. So I'm wondering if his retainer agreement has been amended to broaden the scope of the services that he's been providing. Do you want to answer, or do you want me to keep going?
I believe the investigations are in connection with the grand jury subpoena, and he's provided invaluable help, he's reviewed thousands of documents.
Yeah, it's not timing me on his comments, right?
No.
Okay, fine, proceed.
That's, that's all I have to say.
The New York State Comptroller's audit does not involve a grand jury subpoena. Isn't that his principal responsibility? Responding to the New York State Comptroller's audit, draft audit? Which has nothing, has, there are no grand jury subpoenas issued in connection with the New York State Comptroller's audit, so, so please help me understand that...
There was mixed questions of law and fact in the comptroller's response, that Mr. Capazolo, because of his assistance in other matters, was uniquely situated to assist, and so I believe there is a nexus to it.
Did the New York State Comptroller ever empanel a grand jury as part of its audit?
You know the answer to that question, Mr. Gussler.
I think the people behind me want to hear it.
No, the New York State Comptroller doesn't empanel a grand jury.
That's fine, no is fine, I got it.
Yeah.
I also want to ask, you mentioned that the response submitted by Mr. Capazolo is not subject to FOIL, or that you've been advised by the New York State Comptroller's Office that it should not be disclosed in response to FOIL requests. I want to know if you have any documentation substantiating that the New York State Comptroller's Office told you to treat Mr. Capazolo's response in this fashion?
They didn't...
And make it unavailable under FOIL requests? Or is this a verbal conversation?
No, 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 let me be very clear, okay? They weren't talking about Mr. Capazolo's response when I spoke with them, they were talking about the draft audit, and the response is responding to that draft audit and will become appended to it. So as far as I'm concerned, that's an inter-agency communication, that's a non, that's part of a non-final audit, and therefore is not subject to FOIL.
So you're interpreting your guidance from the New York State Comptroller's Office as inferring that the response as part of the final audit is not subject to FOIL?
I think that the New York State Comptroller wants to get this over with sooner rather than later, and once that happens, everyone will have the document, and I look forward to everybody reading.
Is there any compelling reason why the public shouldn't have access to this document now? It's going to become public at some point anyway.
Yes, because the New York State Comptroller deserves an opportunity to respond if they so choose.
I'm going to ask you again, did they tell you not to disclose it?
They told me not to disclose the draft audit, and I consider this as part of it, because it's commenting on the draft audit.
Okay, so I'm going to take that as a no.
And a response wouldn't make sense if you don't have the draft audit to look at, it's just a response, right?
Okay.
We're responding to things in the draft audit.
So in other words, no. All right, I'd like to comment on Mr., the letter that Mr. Bendo read into the record earlier. I'm appreciative of the council majority writing a letter to the comptroller asking for an opportunity to amend the city's response, because at this point, we're not asking for an extension, it's already been submitted. What we're really asking for is an opportunity to amend it. I'd like to point out that, as best as I can tell by that letter, that this answer or response to the draft audit was submitted against the wishes of the city council, and I think that's something that you guys need to take a look at yourselves and address internally. But it also needs to be pointed out that this, we never should have found ourselves in a position of having to ask for a second bite at the apple. The council had numerous opportunities to prevent the Capazolo response from going in and becoming the official response of the city, but quite frankly, due to the lack of a third vote, you guys blew it. These previous opportunities were wasted. I hope that the comptroller grants the council a request for an opportunity to amend, and I believe that the council, as the people's proxy, the people vote for you to represent us, are the proper party to be putting in that response on behalf of the city, and not some appointed political hacks who do not answer to the voters and who will in all likelihood be gone come January.
All right, Mindy Doveberg, thank you.
Good evening. I have three separate things I want to discuss with you guys.
Oh, can you just move your mic?
Mindy Doveberg, Long Beach, I have three things I want to discuss with you. First off, Mr. Miranda, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I agree with Mr. Dobbs, I think you would make a great city manager permanently.
Two thank yous.
Okay, so Mr. Kalnitsky, you said something about the city of Long Beach vehicles, that they are not supposed to be used for personal use?
They shouldn't be used for personal use.
They shouldn't be used. So I just want some clarification. I've had company vehicles with other jobs in my career path, and I did not have two vehicles. I didn't have, I didn't have a car. The company vehicle was, I used for personal use. So I'm curious, do you expect my Long Beach neighbors to have two vehicles? One for their working and one for their personal use? Because that is just ridiculous.
I mean, I don't expect anything, I don't set the policy, and any answer I provide to that question that you just asked is just going to be purely speculation, so I can't really answer it. I'm sorry.
Okay, I just, I'm just, I just don't understand why you're suggesting that Long Beach employees would have two vehicles.
It's not uncommon for government employees who are given a vehicle to take home, not just in Long Beach, but in other municipalities as well, to have an additional vehicle to use for their personal use, so that taxpayer money is not used for them to...
I just, I just never heard of that.
It's the purpose of giving a take-home vehicle is usually because that person is either on 24-hour response call, or they're expected to do something with the vehicle related to their position, so that's usually why a person is given that car. I can't speak for every single person that gets a car, but generally, that is the reason, and there is an expectation that a person will have their own vehicle, that that's really is commonplace in, for municipal employees.
Okay.
Just, just a note, too, on that, employees that have take-home vehicles, that could be on call, are imputed onto their salary as it's shown as income. We have to do a calculation at the end of the year of how many commuting miles we used, that's changed into a income that gets added to your actual income, and then you're taxed on that by the government, by the feds and the state.
Right, right, I understand, I understand that. I mean, obviously, you're, you look at the miles and your personal versus that, I understand that, I just, okay, all right. So the other thing I wanted to bring up, so Mr. Lester brought up the tables on the boardwalk, which I was very happy he brought that up. There definitely is, I, over the years, with the fairs happening, I did notice that the tables got further and further and further out, so they're not being, when you have tables on both sides, there really is no availability of walking. You are, you are literally like Sardines walking down the middle of the boardwalk.
Absolutely, I've experienced the same thing.
For somebody that is walking with a walker, or even in a, whatever, any type of apparatus, if somebody is walking with crutches, it is so difficult as far as accessibility. I mean, it is just crazy.
Absolutely, and I just want to just speak to that for one moment, only because this was mentioned during our work session on the 24th, and Acting City Manager Miranda spoke to the fact that we are establishing a bike safety committee, and so that will also address some of the issues with respect to the bike lanes.
Right.
Right? So in other words, we're going to address some of these issues, all of these things are going to come out with respect to different committees that we're going to have, all right? So I think that it's important that we follow up on this, but we look at everything in terms of the boardwalk, in terms of safety, but also making sure that people have access, because access is critical, there must be equal access on that boardwalk, but also, if you're just a pedestrian, you're walking, you should have some space, you should have mobility.
Exactly.
And this is something that we're definitely going to look at in terms of having conversations with our residents. It's very important that we receive feedback, and again, this will be another outgrowth of conversations that we will be having in the future with members of our community.
I think there was a period of time, though, that the tables weren't as far out as they're, I mean, I mean, obviously, the boardwalk got wider, so you give, you give an entry where it could take a yard, so I think that's really ended up what happened, I mean, the tables got wider, everyone's space got bigger, so, okay, I think that was all I had. Oh, and as far as Mr. Tagney, the woman was talking about, she didn't know, she didn't see Mr. Tagney, I just went to make, she wasn't out there 24/7, I'm sure Mr. Tagney was out there, even if she didn't see Mr. Tagney out there. Mr. Tagney does do an amazing job, just want to make that statement.
Mindy, one of the recommendations I made on the boardwalk and the bike lanes is...
Yeah.
Allison Blanchett has come up with a scheme that might help really put some great signage that won't be in people's ways.
Yeah.
So I've asked the council that we should appoint a committee of some active walkers and some active bicyclers to come up with some ground rules. Would you like to serve on that committee?
Absolutely.
Okay, if you'd reach out to me.
I will contact her.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right.
Yeah, just call the city manager's office.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
All right, thank you, and last but not least, Eileen Heson. Welcome back, Eileen.
Thank you very much. Eileen Heson, Long Beach. I did have some things to say about the whole Capazola overpayment situation, but the only thing I'm going to say is that several people on the dais tonight said, "To be perfectly clear, and let me make this clear, and I want to make this clear," and I just want you to know, it's not clear, and most of the city feels that way, too. Everyone is very confused about this, so I hope that eventually we get down to brass tacks and find out what really is going on. A small issue that I had brought up many months ago with Agostisi was that at the Magnolia Child Center, former employees seem to be sending their children there and not paying their bills. He said he was looking into it, but nothing ever came of it, so it's a small amount of money comparatively speaking to the millions of dollars Newsday keeps talking about, but still, take a look at it.
We'll follow up on this.
Thank you. Is there a moratorium on hiring? I understood a letter was sent out that we're not supposed to hire anybody for a while. Was there a moratorium on hiring?
There's no moratorium on hiring, we need to keep, keep a staff, but the issue is that, well, Mr. Agostisi was the acting city manager, is this on?
Yes.
Yeah, was the acting city manager, the council had asked him to run all approvals by them, I've asked the council to, you know, if they want to continue with that, or to put it back in where the charter says that the city manager makes those authorizations, and if the city council is going to take that responsibility, then we should change the charter. But we did have to make some appointments at Magnolia Senior Center, because they were short-staffed, they bring back part-timers every year for season, and they were already on board, so they weren't getting paid, working for nothing, so I already moved and signed those PAs, so to make sure we have a smooth operation. Same thing in, with any resignations or terminations for seasonal employees, I've signed off on all those, so that payroll can keep up with its records and what have you, so.
I understand emergency hirings, but I hope you understand the spirit with which I asked that question, that we not hire people who are just not really that necessary.
Any hiring that we would do, I would assure, is within our budget, and people that are replacing, people that are missing.
All right, also, in the letter that John Bendo read in the very beginning of the meeting, I suppose that is asking for amend, for getting an extension or amending the original letter that said the city's response was final, right? We're trying to change that? We're trying to get the comptroller to look again?
Right, and this goes a little bit to the confusion you were talking about. What's going on here, to some degree, a little bit, is sort of a battle for the soul of Long Beach and who runs Long Beach. Is it the staff, or is it the elected officials? In this particular situation, with the investigation and this response, the staff has consciously decided to leave the city council out of the process. So the response submitted was a staff response. It was not a response endorsed by the elected officials, and if you look at the organizational chart of the city, the residents are at the top, then it's the city council, and then you have the staff structure underneath. So we have a little bit of a governing crisis going on right now over who's in charge. There are some staff right now that seem to be taking the position that they run the city, not the council, and that's kind of where we're sitting right now, so that's what's going on here, there's a little back and forth of, we think, I mean, I'll tell you right now, I'm prepared to call a special city council meeting and put a resolution forth to retract that, that response to the audit that was submitted, and make it official to the comptroller, that the city council is officially wants that retracted. I need two other votes on the council here to do that. We probably, if that's, if we're going to do that, we also probably need to pass a resolution...
And I thank John Bendo for months ago, a year ago, whenever it was, for being maybe the first councilperson to ever read the budget and the documents and be able to find what's happening and start this whole process.
Let me clarify. The night I was appointed, they asked about sending this letter. The next day, I got one email from Councilman Bendo with several different options of how to proceed on getting this extension, okay? I had conversations with three other members of the council.
Which ones?
Verbal councils. The only member I wasn't able to speak to in either way was Councilman Mandell, who I spoke to on Saturday after the letter was sent because he was in the process of moving his office. So he wasn't able to get back to me with emails. Based on all those conversations, my intent was to let them know that Rob Agostisi, the past city manager, had authorized the submittal of that thing. He recused himself from it. As far as I know, he wasn't involved. Greg tells me he wasn't. I believe that. So that was the official response from the city. I did ask for an extension, and I did ask for additional input to be allowed from the council. So with not having a clear direction from the entire council, I wanted to make sure I preserved our right to get an extension and preserved the right for council members to add to that response. Maybe I could have picked better wording for the first part on that that was the full response of the city. Because at the time, that was the full response of the city. It wasn't done under my authorization. It was done under previous city managers, so.
I believe Mr. Agostisi did recuse himself from that day. But I don't think he recu, he...
Ms. Heson, if I could just clarify something that Commissioner Miranda just said. While I appreciate the recitation, I think we differ in our recollections. I didn't receive a communication from your office until 5:00 that night that the letter went out. I received no telephone call, no voicemail, no email saying, I have a draft letter that I'm thinking of sending out. You called me on Friday morning, was when I was moving my office, and we spoke on Saturday. Right. But there was no prior communication or an attempt regarding this letter to what I heard from you on Friday?
No, there was a communication to hear from you because based on Councilman Bendo's email, which was sent out to all the council members, there was no email response from anybody.
But there definitely wasn't an email saying, council, here's a draft letter that I'm thinking of sending. Should I not hear from you? I will send it.
No. I did it based on conversations and...
With three other council members?
Right.
Okay. Must have been clarified.
Yeah. No, and my intent was, I did try to call you Friday morning first.
The night that you were chosen city manager.
But let's go back a little bit because I think, again, we're trying to be clear here. As you've said, you weren't, you were not notified, you didn't know, because he didn't send out an overall email to all of us saying, I'm going to send this out. So I think all of us here, I believe everyone that's here on this dais can agree to the fact that we were, we were not notified that this was going out.
This is what I remember.
And hold on, let me finish. And that's why we sent out an email as a council saying that we were concerned. There are, there are emails that have been going back and forth that we have not shared with the public about this issue, but we have been having conversations about it because of the fact that we were all shocked that the information went out without our consent. So I think we need to be clear about that, that no one here that's sitting up here knew that this was going out before it went out.
If I could just, with all due respect, I don't understand half of what was just said.
Okay. So what is it you don't understand?
When we were here Tuesday night, Tuesday night, we asked publicly if there could be a request, now knowing that the report was submitted, that there could be a request for a 45-day extension. Next thing, we get a response from the comptroller saying that they've received the report.
Correct.
They can only accept the report from, one report from the municipality. And my interpretation of that letter was they left some room open, whether or not that was actually the report they were going to accept.
That's correct.
They also said they would entertain an extension.
Yes.
I believe it was either that night or the next night, we had our working meeting, which point we again requested a 45-day extension be asked for. The next communication I received, I can't speak for other council members, was at 5:00 saying, this letter went out. I then received communication from Commissioner Miranda saying he did speak with three council members, which in his defense, we are the bosses. If three council members give a directive, he has to follow that. I can only say I was not one of those three council members. I don't know, I can't speculate who was, but if that's what his directive was, he's got to follow that. I received the communication from him Friday morning. We spoke on Saturday. That's my understanding of the timeline and all the emails I have to back it up.
I have the same emails, but in those emails, and again, an email that was sent to the entire council, I also said the same thing, that the information that I received was at 5:13 after the email had already gone out.
This is what I recall. The night of the special meeting when you were chosen to be the acting city manager, two things were asked. Mr. Mandell, you said, hereon, in the future, can we get some kind of recommendation that the council members know that they are all included in communication? You asked that question. Mr. Miranda said, yes, we will do that. And in fact, you put it in writing the next day. Then Mr. Bendo asked for the 45-day extension, and you said, yes, you would ask for that. So those are two things that went wrong.
He did.
Could I just ask for a clarification?
He did. Sure.
Did you get the email from Mr. Bendo? I did. But that wasn't... Yeah. That had, that had several choices that changed from what was said at the council meeting. That's why...
The special meeting.
No, it did not. It just had different options, but it didn't have anything saying we normally were looking for an extension.